Commissioner Harper-Petersen.
Here.
Commissioner San Filippo.
Present.
Commissioner Digney.
Present.
Vice Chair Marsters.
Here.
Chair Clapper of the Speaker's.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policies to refer items to staff or attention, or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. Is there any public comment? We'll see if Sam Hertzberg's available speaker's card. I know you have approval of the minutes on your agenda as your next item. I just wanted to comment on the last planning commission meeting. I did provide written comments to be considered with the proposed zoning changes and those were not acknowledged or really responded to in the discussion that was had as reflected in the minutes. And I just wanted to make that point that I was hoping to be able to problem solving before this went to the city council. We do appreciate that Deborah is going to come to, planning managers are going to come to give a presentation on the proposed zoning changes toward the end of August 3rd. As you said, I'm very grateful for that, but I did have some specific comments to make and I didn't see that there was any acknowledgement of the comments or discussion of the content of the comments in the minutes. So I just wanted to make that point. I hope you're not just asking for public comment is, you know, just to say we did it, but actually to receive the comments, to do something with it, deliberate positively, negatively, but acknowledge the comments. Sam, didn't we get a copy of that from you earlier? We did. And I do apologize that I was not able to get those to you sooner. You know, the volume of material was received a week earlier and it was like that. We moved it all, we put the comments together. Unfortunately, you know, it all came together the day of the commission, so there wasn't a lot of time to get it to you in advance. But I did follow with Deborah afterwards. We talked and she asked me for a thing, copy of the minutes. I think you have those now, so I just wanted to acknowledge that you have my written comments and I hope there's some, there's some key points in there that I think are worth discussing and problem solving before this goes forward to the city council. Thank you. Deborah, I do believe that those, those comments will be included in anything that goes to the city council.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Unfortunately, we're not able to discuss those tonight because it's part of the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. And are there any corrections or adjustments to the minutes?
I'd like to recommend that you amend the minutes to the correction that Sam Hertzberg submitted into the staff distributed to planning managers in the department. Comments are part of the motion. Thank you.
I have several items that I want to discuss and that is, I believe the recommendation to the city council was to either remove the solid waste pickup exemption or not allow noise before, you know, when we decided on 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM? 6:00 AM? Okay. So I just want to make sure that that's, and that's a modification to the, to the.
Yes. Yes. It's included as part of the motion where the change is made is to Title IX and that will be reflected in what goes forward to the city council.
Okay.
And the change will have to reflect that there is, it needs to be consistent with franchise agreement during the research of the franchise agreement. When a residential property is within 200 feet of a commercial property, 200 feet or less, then there can be no pickup enforced at 6:00 AM. So staff also called, we apologize. If you advise them, would they be putting on their drivers?
Thank you. There were more other items that sort of got lumped together under, asked questions that I asked and I just wanted to make sure that those sort of got pulled out. So we discussed additional passages through the rail corridor. Yeah, we have new transit shelters that should protect riders from the elements. Any new transit shelters should protect riders from the elements. There was a discussion on the 4-H exemption under chapter 18.08 and then landscaping was for the life of the project. And they were, they were all sort of lumped under comments that I made. And then there was Chair Clapper of the City Council. So they're at the top of the, the third inch or whatever.
Right. I think, but number six.
Oh, we did, did the landscaping. Okay. Right. And, yeah, the additional passages through the rail corridor, the new transit shelters and the 4-H exemption. They already have buildings on those properties.
Correct. That's correct. So, so the minutes then were.
Through, so really public works kind of recommendations which don't get reflected in zoning.
Okay.
Or the municipal code. So that's why they're not reflected.
That's why they're not in that list of 11 down, down below.
Right. Right.
Okay. Getting back to my agenda. So do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the minutes as amended to take into consideration, Sam, is it Hertzberg? Hertzberg's comments via letter that we all received.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention. The next item on the agenda is new business and I believe we're getting a study session on the East Side connectivity project.
Yes, we are and I would like to, you have a brief staff report that mentions what the process is and you are part of it. So Brian Fletcher of Calendar Associates and Jason Mansfield of BKF are here to kind of run you through the presentations and then you can have conversation and comment.
Thank you, commissioners. I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and present the project. My name is Brian Fletcher. I'm with Calendar Associates. We're the prime consultant on the job. I'm also a local resident of, resident of San Carlos. So needless to say, I'm really excited about the project and really excited about the open house that we had just a few weeks ago and the interest and the excitement that we had with that. So tonight is to give you an introduction about the project. You probably already know about it, but it's kind of a confusing project, so I want to do that. And then I want to give you a little bit of a glimpse of, of what we heard at the open house. And most importantly, I want to hear from you and what your thoughts and, and what opportunities you see, having driven, walked, resided in this area. What's the easiest way? Do I just press the button?
Just click.
Just click on anything.
I'm clicking.
Go to slide.
Let's see.
If you clicked on "End Show," that will end it.
Let me go get our IT guy.
There you go.
Off and running, right? Let's see if I can, well, let's leave it up there just in case it continues. We basically were brought on board to do a number of things. First off is to reach out to the community and, and find out what the community wants to see as part of the Old County Road and East San Carlos kind of corridors, which is the main focus. Some of the other aspects of it were undergrounding utility lines, improvements to Old County Road, essentially from Belmont all the way down to Redwood City. Obviously, because of budget, there's varying degrees of improvements that are going to be made. Bike Boulevard was part of an MTC grant. We are currently evaluating that. That Bike Boulevard was proposed on East San Carlos Avenue to make a better connection between industrial road and the train station itself. Finally, Class II bike lanes, where possible, where feasible. We are currently evaluating the right of way and, and obviously we've got kind of a constrained right of way. In areas, we're going to be able to do Class II bike lanes. In other areas, we may not be able to do that and be able to do Class III with sharrows. And then pavement rehab of the entire corridor. Hey, it is working. Thank you. We, when the, when the, the project initially had this really long drawn out name. Since then, it's been shrunk to East Side Connect. Still, that name is, what is it? You know, what, what is East Side Connect? So we tried to and we presented these boards at farmers markets and such, just to give people a glimpse of what it could be. It's basically San Carlos Avenue and, and East San Carlos Avenue and Old County Road, that's the focus. Utility undergrounding, wider, potentially wider sidewalks, removal of obstructions. Bald outs are another opportunity. Basically pedestrian enhancements. Connectivity to major elements, whether it's downtown L'Oriola Park. Improving bike safety, so not just pedestrian safety, looking at all modes of transportation, bikes, peds, cars. Taking a look at beautification of the corridor, street trees and rain gardens, installation of pedestrian lights and other art and wayfinding elements that could dramatically enhance the corridor for people of all San Carlos. And again, we were presenting the project limits as essentially Old County Road and East San Carlos Avenue. We had the first of two public workshops. We called it our open house. We had it on July 30th, on a Saturday, for four hours. It was great. We had, we had about 40 to 50 people show up, very positive, and I kind of want to show some of the input that came from this. We gave people a questionnaire, simple, lots of questions to fill out. We're still currently tabulating this, but I wanted to give you some of the, some of the input. Where do you live and work? You know, so you can see where people are coming from for this workshop, generally from the neighborhood. How do you use Old County Road? Job, eat, drive to work? So you can see by the number of votes or tabulations where the majority of the people were. Where are your biggest concerns? Okay, so this starts to, it starts to, to have a focus to the project where we need to definitely keep a focus. Pedestrian safety, traffic, noise, parking. So what we did is we tried to give pictures and, and people respond generally more towards pictures rather than to drawings or anything else. We call these inspiration images and we categorize these by different areas of parking. Where was it most important for people to park and so forth? We gave people stickers. I think a couple of you were, were actually at the open house. Gave people stickers and they got to put those stickers on what images they felt most strongly about. So you can see, we looked at parking locations. We looked at pedestrian improvements. We looked at bicycle options and other enhancements, rain gardens, site furnitures, plant art, lighting. So these are a little bit backwards and I apologize. So on this case, it's actually the highest votes are down at the bottom and, and lowest votes are up at the top. But you can start to see where people started putting their stickers down. Wider sidewalks, street trees, crosswalks, lighting. So again, these kind of go hand in hand with what we heard before as far as pedestrian improvements kind of being the, the number one. What amenities do you want to see? Again, wider sidewalks, trees and plants, art, bike lanes. We had a great, great map that went out and we basically wanted just, wanted people to tell us, where, where do you live? Where do you walk? How do you get there? Tell us where the problem areas are and just gave them some pens to look at. These are just samplings of, of that diagram. You know, you can see El Camino and, and Holly Street, the big X with a mess. A lot of focus was on Old County and Holly Street in that intersection as well as getting across the train station. There was focus of the Royal Undercrossing, making better and safer connections there. As well as north of Holly Street, trees, trees, trees. So again, you begin to see the flavor of the comments from the participants. We also gave them an additional questionnaire to respond to on, on some imagery that we had on there. You notice in the prior slide, there was images of parking. We wanted to get from people, we're looking for opportunity areas, obviously. Right now, we've got a constrained corridor. We've got two travel lanes. We've got generally parking on both sides. Are there parking areas that people would be open to? Illuminating in order to get wider sidewalks, bike lanes or something else. Generally, the focus were high priority on the residential side parking and business side parking, which would be all the parking on the east side of Old County Road. And then limited votes for the parking on, very limited votes on parking on the west side, which is a Caltrain side. With the exception of the parking close to the train station, there's probably about 15 stalls just, just south of the train station there that are used by people that don't want to pay for parking in the, in the regular lot. One of the questions that we asked is, because a lot of these improvements can improve identity of the corridor. We're going to be improving aesthetics and things like lighting and other character elements can build identity. So we wanted to ask people what they felt the identity of East San Carlos was. And, and it was interesting because in this question, when we asked it this way, people felt they were different than the rest of San Carlos. However, when we showed them lighting, simple lighting, you know, what type of fixture do you like to see? Do you want to see something that is from downtown, which is a traditional acorn fixture, El Camino, a traditional but more modern fixture, or something totally different and modern? When we asked them that question, this is what we got. Okay, so what this is telling me is right now, they feel like they are, that, that neighborhood is different, but they want to be more, they want to be brought into the fold. So if we can bring elements and details from downtown and, and the other parts of San Carlos to make it one unified community, that's what people are looking for. So I'm here to listen tonight. Tomorrow, we're presenting at the Transportation and Circulation Commission. From that, we're going to take all the input and develop refined concept plans that we're going to then present back to a community workshop on September 7th. I believe it's a Wednesday night, again, over at L'Oriola Park. We are going to then refine those based upon the input and present those concepts at council on September 26th. Then we move into construction documents. It's going to take some time, but we've got a deadline with MTC. That's where a majority of our funding is coming from, at least for the non-undergrounding portion. We have to get those done by February 1st. Plans into Caltrans for review, for approval of the 76. Absolutely doable and confidence that that can be done. There is flexibility. We have a second portion not funded through MTC, which is the undergrounding. That's going to take a little bit of time. So we're going to essentially have two paths that are going to hopefully come together and we're going to go out to bid late summer 2012, into fall of 2012 and start construction then. So that's, that's the timeframe as it sits right now. With that, I'm, I'm all ears tonight and answer any questions and, and most importantly, take your feedback.
Deborah, should we start with the public? Is this open to, so let's hear if there's anybody who'd like to. Can you state your name?
Ben Fuller, 1035 Sylvan Drive, Greater East San Carlos neighborhood. Yeah, I want to concur with what we just saw. You know, everyone thinks that this neighborhood has just lost every battle, but this is actually our first significant thing and we got Deborah here, who I know was one of the key architects of the, the grant proposal and the idea and Al, who's not here. And in our attempt to work more closely with you guys, we want to, you know, acknowledge the importance of this, this incredible project and how it might help us connect our neighborhood and our, our residents to the services and, and businesses in this area. So a couple of things that were brought up that, that are worth delineating, one of which is, is the issue of the Holly Street, Old County Road, sort of pedestrian safety issue. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it, it's very scary and there's really not enough space for folks to cross and so we did mention that in detail as, as being a main issue. The other issue is the larger Greater East San Carlos vision, which is as you, you figure out the final zoning for the, the industrial, commercial and residential around our neighborhood and how it relates to our residential, we believe that the green belt of trees, that this particular project is going to start and we hope to encircle the entire neighborhood with eventually, is an incredibly important thing. And so we're very excited to have those trees and there were a lot of people that denotated trees. Finally, I'll just say that just, just the fact that you guys are here listening and working on this project is so much appreciated. So thanks a lot to all you guys for, for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? No? Commissioners, would you like to comment on it?
We have to close this public hearing.
Oh, do we have to?
Close this public hearing, Deborah.
It's not really a public hearing.
It's a study session.
It's just a study session, yeah.
This is a no-brainer for me. I think it's the best thing I've seen in a long time and it has nothing to do with East San Carlos, it just has to do with improving the entire area. I mean, why wouldn't anybody want to do that? I do have one question though about the undergrounding thing. Is that a PG&E issue? I, just a technical thing. I always thought that you, they have a program with their undergrounding as they go.
Yeah, I mean, maybe Deborah can talk more about the Rule 28 fundings that, that it's coming from, but there are certain funds, that's why it's separate from the MTC grant, that can be utilized for undergrounding of utilities. So that's what, that's what we're doing right now. We're also evaluating right now how, how far those funds can go. We've got an electrical engineer on board that has been studying all the various drops and, and the technical issues that are, are required in order to get those underground, where boxes and vaults are going to have to go and such. So it's an ongoing process that we think we're going to be able to bring a recommendation to council and, and the rest of the community at the workshop on, on where we think we've got budget to take that undergrounding. You know, that'll happen on September 7th and the council, who will approve the undergrounding district on September 26th.
Just a little more on that. We have $1.2 million and we're looking at, we're, we're working with a steering committee and the priority has been that we first looked at Old County Road in the streets, the residential streets that front Old County Road. So our first priority is about terminal north to Northfield.
North.
Or Riverton. Northam.
Northwood.
Northwood, thank you. Then with money, any money that we have in excess of that, and there will be some, is to look at what we might be able to do on East San Carlos Avenue. But to Mr. Fuller's point, that does kind of coincide with where we want to tree up Old County Road too, so you can get more trees if you have more room in the sidewalk to put them. So that's our, that's, you know, it's not stated as a gateway in, in the general plan, but it, it, it's not just El Camino, Holly and Old County Holly, but that whole strip is a gateway to neighborhoods and we want that to look a lot better. So that's our priority. We'll, we'll get more on that as we get closer to September 26th with the council.
Quick question about the undergrounding. If you have to stop short of the end of the residential area, would you put the infrastructure in place to be able to underground that later? Or is that?
Are we, we're getting pretty confident that we're going to be able to do all the undergrounding within the residential area on Old County Road.
Okay.
I think, based, I think we can say that with confidence, based upon the initial estimates that have been coming in.
Yeah, the northern, the northernmost line, we could, we're trying to go not quite to Taylor, but past the residential neighborhood, including maybe the multifamily building that's adjacent on the north side. It adds, that piece is a lot more expensive, however, it's only two more poles north-south, but there is a crossing over the Joint Powers right of way and that's expensive to bore under and go to El Camino. So we are going to look at how far the money goes, have more conversations about what's your priority here. And if we decide that we will not underground those last two, then it would be an opportunity to do a greater bulbout landscape up. There's already some trees there that kind of hide the uppermost portion of that, but we'll look at several alternatives. And you can add the underground districts later. Or we could make the choice to make the underground district bigger and then hope we find money and not do as much.
Like it? Comments?
I like it and I also really liked the public outreach that I saw at least at the farmer's market and the workshops were great, so.
Can I, can I take this opportunity to ask you some questions possibly?
Yes.
Sure. What, do you have any specific views there? Holly Street intersection, taxi stand, waiting of taxis? Do they belong there? Do they be moved? Do you have any thoughts? Holly Street, what right now we're looking at is, is traffic movements on Holly Street. Right now, we've got a lot of lanes on Old County Road. There's a right, if you're going northbound, you have a right turn lane, a through lane and a left turn lane. Going southbound, you have the same. If traffic movements weren't that significant for those right turn lanes, would, there's opportunities to maybe remove those, to have wider sidewalks, to possibly even get a median to have a left turn pocket into L'Oriola Park. These are all just ideas that, that we're still exploring, but I thought I'd take your, take some expertise from you.
Yeah, I don't really have a point of view about that part of it, other than I assume there's a, there's a traffic study that somebody's going to do with, because I'm, yup, you don't want to make a situation worse, but I, I'm, I've been over there before and had to try to cross that street to take my 11-year-old to get something and it's like, it's death city because you come out of L'Oriola Park and you have to walk all the way up to the corner just to get across the street and you got people cutting right across that thing on a regular basis. It, it really is not a very good place, especially when you have kids.
I'd be fascinated to see the traffic study as well. I mean, I avoid the area by foot at all costs.
I have lots of comments. Yeah, the whole area around the, the existing Caltrain station is, needs help. The problem is that the crosswalk is in the middle of a block rather than at the end of a block and it really should be moved so that vehicles that are, are traveling on Old County recognize that there are, there are pedestrians crossing there. I've seen cars blow through red lights there. I've seen them inch all the way up to the sidewalk because they're unclear as to exactly where they're supposed to stop in that intersection. So that's, if, if we could somehow move that crosswalk to one of If we could somehow move that crosswalk to one of the streets, probably something like East San Carlos Avenue, that would be a good option. The other thing I see is that typically, when I take Caltrain back and forth to work, there are... The whole kiss-and-ride area is completely filled with taxis, and in fact, sometimes it's so filled that there's five of them there, and two of them parked across the street, and that's a 10-minute parking zone, and they're only there because we've actually asked to have the shuttles moved out of that area in order to provide space for people to drop off. So one idea would be to try and move the taxis to the other side.
The other side of Old County or other side of Caltrain?
The other side of the station. I'm guessing, but my understanding is that the taxis are coming from Redwood Shores, where it's cheaper to actually pay for somebody to get to the Caltrain station in a taxi than to have a shuttle program set up all the time. So I have a feeling that a lot of those taxis aren't even people who are living or working in San Carlos, they're just using the Caltrain station. And so that's another concern, is how to do that. I'd love to see some public art there. I think it would be great to have something there. All along the corridor, the... There's three entrances or three places that's underground where you can get through the berm. And I've seen people come out of those things and just not look either way and come right out into the street. So there needs to be some better mechanism for bikes and pedestrians to be aware that they're stepping out of those onto a fairly busy street. I really like the idea of bulbouts and wider sidewalks, and as many trees as you can plant. Getting the poles out of the middle of the sidewalk, repairing the sidewalks, all of those are great ideas.
Great. Can you go back to the crosswalk again on the, that would be on the east side of the berm?
Yes.
It's in the middle?
Right now...
Is there... I can't remember, is there a flashing yellow light there?
There is a stoplight. You actually press the button and it will...
No, 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 that's not what I meant. So there is a light that's flashing yellow, isn't it? Like a caution light?
No.
Just a normal...
It's a red, green, yellow light.
So is it, and it's pedestrian-driven?
It's pedestrian-driven, yes.
I just was sitting here thinking about that. It seems to me that if a train was coming, why wouldn't that thing just automatically go to a flashing red light, period? How hard would that be? So the people automatically, when the train comes in, because that's when everybody unloads or loads, it stops, it's going to stop the traffic, they're going to have to stop. Because it's only a very short period of time, the train, when the train takes off and you wait five or 20 seconds or whatever it happens to be, and then that would solve some of, that would...
Because it actually takes time for people to get off the train and down and across and things like that, so...
There's a trigger mechanism that you have to put into it that would probably work.
Yeah.
I mean, that is dangerous.
At the same time, allowing the movements off the train and making these crosswalks more accessible. Right now, that crosswalk, you come down the stairs and then you have to go southbound and then across. It's not very intuitive.
Right.
You know, it's... If you make these crosswalks a little bit easier and to get to and highly visible, as well as the push buttons and the timing of those push buttons, I think that could also work as well. And someone said getting them closer to the intersection makes a lot of sense, too.
If you're going north, you actually have to walk all the way down to the south end of the station in order to cross and go across. So nobody who goes north actually uses the light, because they're all either going to walk down to Holly, which is dangerous, or they just cross in the middle of the street as they're walking. Another idea is a brick in the ground where that crosswalk would be, so that you actually have a difference between the pavement, so that people actually recognize that there are pedestrians crossing there in addition to lights.
They have those flashing pedestrian lights now.
Yeah, that's another option for that. Sometimes I think the light is too short, and sometimes I think the light is too long there. And I see people get, and cars get impatient, if one person presses the button, and then all of a sudden, they, somebody starts to, you know, one person walks, and then they sit there and wait long enough. I see them edging up, like the light's going to change immediately.
It's really interesting to sit there and watch the social dynamics of that intersection and people coming off of Caltrain.
And you can watch the taxi drivers scream at each other, and, you know, I mean, it's almost like a little interesting area.
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
We have no public hearings, so we will skip that, and we'll move on to reports, correspondence, and general information. Any reports on recent city council actions?
No, the council's been on recess, returning August 22nd, so nothing to report.
Planning commission comments or reports?
The only comment I had was actually to Sam, who's leaving, but I just happened to glance at my notes. We did address a lot of the things that were in his letter. It just, I think his, he was just concerned that it wasn't reflected in the minutes. I just hope he knows that, that we addressed, I mean, transitions, we probably had a 40-minute discussion on.
Yes.
Light industrial in and out, even though that was separate from the zoning conversations. We definitely touched on that. And noise, again, we had to have talked about it for at least another 30 minutes. So I just wanted to make that point, that we certainly didn't ignore his comment in any way. We really addressed those issues.
I think Ms. Nelson, when you do speak with them, again, you can also point out that, you know, we weren't able to address the comments, like Mr. Marcher said, but also the note, the minutes are not meant to be comprehensive.
I would like to say that at the Residential Design Review Committee today, we had a Project 151 Coronado, which will be coming to us in the next couple of weeks, probably within the next month.
On appeal?
No.
Okay.
We, as the Residential Design Review Committee set as a, made a recommendation to bring it to the Planning Commission. Correspondence?
You had one in your packet, which we received the night of the public hearing on the zoning ordinance and has addressed the zoning ordinance. It was following a Residential Design Review Committee meeting. There was no appeal of that project. And then you have another letter on your dais tonight, which we will refer to the sheriff's department. It's not in the planning commission's purview, although it was addressed to you.
Thank you. Any other comments, reports, or updates, current projects?
Just further on the letter that we sent to you from Mr. Hirsberg, that will be attached to the city council's packet and addressed, will be a paragraph addressing the correspondence we received, and we've begun to write that. Planning commission, although you didn't go point by point by point of the letter, you addressed almost everything in it with your motions and discussion. So we will reflect that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That being said, meetings adjourned.